Let's get started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll start with approving the minutes from June 2020.
I'm going to approve the minutes, would you?
I second it.
All in favor? Okay. Uh, we need to approve bills for July 2025.
I made a motion to approve the bills for July. I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, that was cool. So, we're gonna talk about the budget hearing, amending ordinance 136B FY 2429 fiscal year. So, I open the budget hearing for amending ordinance number 136B fiscal year 2425. Is there anybody that has any comments on that and with thoughts?
What were the amendments to be done?
So, because we did the streetlights that we weren't planning for, we bought a trailer and then truck payments if we get one piercing. Those are the major things that we changed up. And if you look on the page, each bun will pay for a truck. Partially. The amended one, yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Nothing? I guess I'll close the budget hearing for amending ordinance number 136B fiscal year 25. 2425. So, we need to vote on that.
Yeah, get a motion.
Need a motion, and your motion needs to include way beyond required.
I need to get a motion on that.
I make a motion, we accept the amended budget and way beyond required.
That works.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor? Okay?
And you're supposed to roll call.
Yeah, oh.
So I just asked.
Which I did write that down.
It's an animal.
Pam? Laura?
Yes.
What's your name? Alan?
I'm Bea.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Brittany, yes, okay.
Here's second to that one, this one.
All right, we'll move on. The square electronic payment acceptance, you wanna talk about that?
Uh, yeah, so, and I did put fee resolution, I probably should have swapped them.
It's okay, just talk about the bill.
Um, so, to do the square electronic payment, we talked about last month that we would have to introduce a fee with that. Um, the max that we can do is $5 with just a cost of living increase. Um, I did last month, I did do this, it's a little sloppy, but you can see what the average charges are.
Thank you.
Um, the one can, how much we would lose out of the two most useful chart ways of charging the card, which would be in person or probably like a text or auto pay, and how much you would lose per transaction. So, $5 would cover most of it except for on bills that are bigger than the regular one, like if they have two cans or more. To do on the invoices, to set up for like automatic payments for people that want to do that, I can't do a percentage, so a flat rate would be best. Um, there were people that came in today that I asked, um, because they had seen that on the agenda, and I said, "And would you pay $5 to use it?" They both said absolutely, which shocked me, 'cause I wouldn't. So, you wouldn't have to charge them a fee unless they used it. That would be the only way they would get the extra whatever fee.
They could have paid $5 and paid for a step.
Well, like
Or they don't have checks.
A lot of people don't have checks, so they go get a money order. I know through connections, a money order is $3. Now, you can set it up on auto pay, and they'll mail me a check, and that's free. They can still do that if they go to other.
Well, it's like one, one person that come in earlier, and he's gotta leave his business and come in, deal with it, and then go back, and by the time
So he looks at it as
By the time he makes that whole trip, he's lost an hour, which is 100 whatever dollars just as labor rate, so he's like, "Yeah, I'll pay $5, just get it done, move on, save money." So.
So it's only the people that are gonna use it?
It's only the people that are gonna use it.
That they're charged $5 and
And they accept that?
They would have to accept that in order to use it, yes. Nobody else would be charged that. And if they, if we don't use it all, it doesn't cost us anything. There's no fee contract.
We have a lot of people with two cans.
I'm gonna say off the top of my ten right now, I think that there's only 10 extra cans out there. Well, 10 people.
So like next year, could we increase it by another 35 cents or whatever?
If we felt like we needed to, I mean, we'll have more information, how much will it get used, like, some people may put on auto pay through the invoicing that you can do and use their checking account. That only charges us 1%. You know what I mean?
Okay, I see what you're saying.
We're not gonna lose $5 on every transaction. But I think that
So if you pick a flat rate to use this, would it cover those two, or would you use a percentage on those?
You can't, I can't put a percentage on the invoice, I have tried a million ways to do it.
So it would be a flat rate regardless of how you use this?
Yeah. So are you saying like if so many people with one can used it, and then one person with two cans used it, would the flat rate cover the people with two cans? Like
Well, if somebody uses their checking account
I think overall it's going to balance out.
If somebody uses their checking account and it's, they only charge us 1%, but we're still charging them $5 fee to do that, that covers the cost of that we're losing if somebody's got multiple cans?
Yeah.
Is that, is that what I'm
That's, that's assuming that all 10 people are going to do that.
Yeah.
And I'm not.
Yeah, I would
And I have two cans. I'll just read them list.
I, I was just asking to, to clarify that that's what it would be.
Well, that's three out of 10. 'Cause we got multiples, we got multiples. Anything else? Okay, we'll move on.
Do we have to make a motion?
Motion or table, and if you want to
You got a question?
He's got a question though.
So we can still throw the money in the door?
Yes.
Okay. Or, you know.
You do not have to use the service.
And if you want to, if your bank allows bill pay, if you go in there and enter city, you know, and set up City Baseball, you go, "What's my bill pay?"
Yeah, and most things, that's a free service. I know connections, it's free.
Yeah. That's, that's what we pay, we pay, that's why we also do the electric, we do the gas, we can all, it's all bill pay.
I will be honest, I was one of those people that struggled paying my bill because you have to bring it in or mail it. And I couldn't do either.
Either way, you gotta come this way.
How much work? And so you just don't think about it, like, I get that, but, so there are people that are willing to pay that, and that's funny to me, but, 'cause it is just around the corner from all of us, it's not like it's a long distance.
And we count ones and lots, so.
What do you think, Alan?
I'd say if people wanna do that, it's not gonna cost Yeah. I don't think there's any harm in trying it and having the option.
What do you think, Alan?
Everybody pays with a card, they pay the, the card fee, it's just the way it is.
So we wanna vote on it?
It's gonna be a cashless environment pretty soon, so
I think it's already getting there.
We deal with cards all the time.
I think we should vote, I, I personally feel like we should vote on it, 'cause I'm in favor of it, because I agree, somebody else is gonna pay up with it, and they're gonna cover the fee if somebody else with two cans pays it, we're gonna come out fine.
Yeah, I think so.
If it becomes a problem, then we can stop it, but
And
I think more people will pay, or, I mean, it's gonna make Brian's life easier too.
And I don't know if you remember, but in the future, I said I want to look at what we're collecting, our outgoing every January, 'cause that's about when PSI will put in their raise too, and then February, we can decide.
I think that's a good idea.
What to do, so we'll have a little bit more information then.
I, I vote for it, 'cause I know that there's, I guarantee there's a lot of people who wanna use this.
Yeah.
Do you have a formal motion?
All right, so my brain is high on cold medicine, do what now?
Make a motion.
Yeah, the motion to, you know, try out the square electronic payment acceptance.
I make a motion to try out the electronics, the square electronic payment accept, acceptance.
I second it.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. We'll give it a shot.
So then the fee resolution. Hey, fees. Um, when I was doing this, I decided we should probably look at all the fees that we charge, um, and do a cost of living, and then I looked at all the fees that are in the ordinances, and I went, "Hmm, probably need to do a budget hearing." But, so, the fees that we charge, and I don't know if this actually is a fee, in ordinance 86, there's a security deposit of $100. And our current monthly bill is 130, so I think that that should change soon, but a cost of living is not gonna do much. Uh, service call charge, so anytime that Brian technically goes to somebody's house, we are supposed to charge $5 service call, and if he's there longer and it takes more time, then I guess, I don't know, it didn't really specify like an hour or more, um, but this was written in 1986.
So, what is he going to the
Yeah, what's the
I guess
So for instance, Fielding's over there, they're putting in a new manufacturing form, so when I went and shut their water off so that they could tear the old one down, and then they made a new connection, they wanted me to turn it back on, so I went back over there, turned it back on, then they did a bunch of work, and now it's leaking, so they had me come back out and shut it off. And they got it fixed, and then I went back out and turned it back on. So, right, that's, that's, I think, what it's calling.
The fee, the thought is what it is, um, but how long have you looked here? Have you ever seen a service charge on your bill? How many people are in the van? I don't
A lot of times, guy just handed the people the
Yeah.
The tools and said, "Let me know when you're done."
No, we get that. Um, the other fee that we charge is a reconnect fee, and this fee is when people get turned off and want back on, we charge them a new security deposit plus a reconnect fee. I cannot find anywhere in the ordinance or resolutions that fee, so I don't know if that was coming from the service call charge. Did you find anything?
In looking at resolutions?
So, I don't, I honestly don't know where that comes in.
That service charge just says a minimum of $5, it doesn't
It is on all the
Doesn't say maximum, so I guess it could still be
Well, what I, I mean, what I think, 'cause you wanna have a full resolution, fee resolution that just has everything on it.
Uh huh.
Um, and I don't know if that's the table you created.
I was, I wanted to make a table, but also I'm like, I feel like I need to collect more information.
'Cause, 'cause you're gonna wanna have a public hearing to, 'cause, 'cause you're like, your $5 turn on, off is way, way low.
Yeah. Well, and the water hookup and sewer hookup, $1,000 as well. So, I am proposing right now, what we do is the electronic payment fee resolution, and then we'll add to that later.
Yeah, I mean, so if you can get them all put together, 'cause then you can have a public hearing, and then have one every year if you need to, if you're going over the 5%, but any new fee or anything over 5% should get added publicly here, though.
Yeah.
But you ought to get it all on, you know, one or two pages.
Yeah.
Here's every fee we charge, that's easy to track.
Goals.
And then any new fee just get amended to that.
Right.
So it rolls in.
What does, uh, for the charge on the turn on, I think?
I don't know, I know Blackpuss is $100.
Yeah. And then there's a weekend one too, I know that.
After hours, and, yeah. So, I don't know what the first charge is, but we can, we can figure it out, but yeah, I know Blackpuss is $100.
So when you schedule
Isn't that $100 turn on?
$100 turn on?
Nope.
Weekend, holidays.
So should we do a resolution for the electronic payment one?
Well, do that all together, 'cause
You still say do it all together? Okay.
So I would say do it all together, you're not gonna have that many, I mean, it's not a big deal for a month, but then we can publish notices of all your new fees, and just do it all in
So can I still charge that fee even though the resolution is written?
You're not technically supposed to, but if you, you can have it for next month, how many people are gonna pay if there's only 10 of them? I mean, it's a
There's several people that wanna pay electronic
Yeah.
How many do you have?
But, I mean, you don't have to charge the fee, we could eat that until we do
For a month.
That's what I mean, if you've seen them for a month.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so I mean, it's not a
Worst case scenario, it's a huge dollar issue.
We'll take it out.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
True. Take it longer to figure it out.
So a motion to table fee resolution, and we'll do a public hearing with it.
I think you do them all at once.
And do it all in one.
So do we need to discuss what fees we wanna charge?
Uh, we probably should.
So.
Well, that's where you probably ought to leave these able together, so you know what you got, and then
I have one right here.
The council can add one.
So, what do you think the $5 was based on, like, the hourly wage back then?
I think probably, I mean, what was the minimum wage then? I mean, it's gotta at least be equivalent to what he makes.
I remember being $525, but I was born in 83, so
Well, when I went in 95 and got my first job, I had $3.15.
Well, I remember 270.
That's what I'm saying, 'cause I bet you $5 was an hourly rate.
I remember getting paid $10 an hour, so.
So the security deposit, let's start with that one first, right now it's $100. So, one bill is 130, it's been $100 looking back on the books, when I was going through all those boxes, even when the bill was like $30 and $40, the security deposit was 100. So, do you do like first and last month? Do you just do one month, 130?
I don't know, what does everybody say?
Where do we wanna set it?
I have no idea, what do you guys
I think it needs to be at least one month.
Also deposit, like when you, uh, turn electricity on, 'cause they want deposits.
That really depends on your credit.
I have no idea.
They don't always charge a deposit.
I know most security deposits are two months worth.
What do you think it should be, Garrett? Garrett, what do you think it should be? You see this in more cities than we do.
I don't know what the, I don't know what any of them charge on the security deposit. I can find out, that's not something I deal with, I haven't paid a security deposit
I know, that's what I need.
I, I don't know that most city utilities, when I, we lived in Idaho Falls, I didn't have to pay anything.
Yeah, I didn't either.
I know Blackpuss collects one, but I don't know any of what it is.
So what is a security deposit for?
So you hold it for a year, and if they're bad at paying their bill
You use that, you know, to
If they're shut off or anything, it applies to their
And then after the year, then they give that back?
After the year, if they're good at paying their bill, they give it back.
If it is, the more likely they're going to pay their bill, so they can get it back.
Yeah, but they also don't wanna make it scary to the point that they can't afford
I think at least one month, for sure.
Yeah, I think just 130.
Okay, service call charge.
I think it should be Brian's hourly rate, if that, 'cause I'll bet you that $5 was an hourly rate back then.
Or even 50.
I'd say hourly rate, and then double that just for, you know, gas, whatever, maintenance, all that stuff.
Then do you double it?
50 and a weekend call is 100?
Weekend and
Sounds good.
Weekend and holidays?
After hours, yeah.
Okay, water sewer hookups, should we double that for now? I mean, the homeowner takes on a big expense of it, most of it, we just have to put in the meter.
But generally, for homeowners, their building, that's all rolled into their financing, so it's not a big hit, it's spread, spread out over the
Well, but if they tear in the road, they're supposed to pay to do all of that work.
Yeah, but gen- generally, they will, in their financing, they will get all that rolled in into Their construction costs. Yes, and it'll all roll into their, their fees that way. So you're not, you're not, you're, you're not slapping them, "Oh, I gotta pay this right now out of my own pocket," and that's that, they get it rolled into their construction fees and stuff like that. So otherwise, nobody could afford to do it.
What is it right now?
A thousand each.
I think, what did First move theirs to?
Wasn't it five? Did I do that right?
I was gonna say, I think Shelley is around six or so, or more, seven.
I think Shelley's is
I think they're 72. That they move there's a
And do they do the same thing where the, whoever's doing it does all the dirt work?
Yeah, yeah.
I'd probably say five then. If Shelley's charging eight now, we're not as big as Shelley, we're not quite as big as First.
Do you guys get that, uh
You start seeing expenses
Well, that's a good point.
You might just want to see what other smaller communities do.
Yeah.
Just the whole valley.
Definitely, see if Garrett can get those for you, and I'd go with that.
But I have one hanging on.
Oh, okay.
Should you say he's 25?
Right.
Drew?
25, 34 for one. I won't get confused with everybody. I'm called New Millian Impact Fees.
Oh, instead of a connection fee?
That's what.
That's a good idea.
Well, yeah, so I've been, but yeah, it's a hookup or connection, 'cause I would use that, 'cause your impact fee would be more your streets and stuff, which people are trying to a little bit away from.
Oh. So leave it as water and sewer hookups?
Okay, you get impact fee, you gotta keep it specific.
Okay, and then reconnect fee, I'm assuming that's that service call. So, that's what I know. I guess you do
So why are they being reconnected? Because they've been shut off?
Yeah.
Should they have to pay another security deposit?
Yeah, that's what happens now, yeah.
So then they, they pay the
130.
130 plus the charge for me to go out there and turn it back on.
Yeah.
Plus whatever their rear is up to, yeah.
Which they're always mad about, but
And if you're doing, if you're doing it, turn it all back correctly, I mean, they should have water running, you should be there watching it for 15 minutes, that's, that's a minimum, you should have water running back through the house
Yeah.
Before they shut their water off at night. Then I leave this home, you're, you're talking about 15, 20 minutes to, to turn it off. To shut it off, I don't, it's quick and easy.
Okay.
Turn it back on is what it takes to like
I think that's it for fees, and once you can think of anything else that we should add, think about, and somebody probably needs to make a motion to table it.
Table it, move it to a public hearing?
I make a motion, we table that and do a public hearing on it.
Awesome, good day.
All in favor? Okay, we'll table that. Amending ordinance number 87, remanufactured housing.
Yeah, so I looked through that a little bit, um, obviously I looked around at some of the other communities, um, and I should be comfortable for you, I think the one that might work for you the best would be kind of adopting one very much more similar to Aberdeen. So it's the bottom of that first page, and then back in the second, it's just very simple. Yours is a little bit convoluted, with some of the definitions and stuff, makes it a little more difficult to read, and Aberdeen's was just a very simple, what the requirements are beyond, you know, the HUD, um, requirements for manufactured homes. Then the other big question I have for you, your current ordinance then says you can't have a manufactured home adjacent to another lot that has a manufactured home, which seems a little odd, because if
I think
This neighbor, this neighbor gets to do it, why can't this neighbor?
Yeah. I think there was an amendment to that.
Wasn't it, I think there was an amendment on the deck sheet.
'Cause I didn't see, I didn't go that passing, this 87, maybe there is, 'cause that seemed a little strange to me.
I think it was changed.
I think it was too.
I think I remember
103?
Maybe I should have
Because we thought that was a little weird too.
Yeah.
But I think they changed it about the time they were talking with this Kathy Nelson about the, the current
No, I think it was
Was it before then?
Before then.
Yeah, I, I think there is one that says that
Let me see.
It's a short little paragraph, I think that it says that it's
Yeah, this looks good.
'Cause it, and most people don't know about it, and because back
Do you wanna read it?
One of those stories came in council meetings, it came up, and, uh, who said, "Oh no, we can't," you know, what's his, uh, lost his name, previous mayor.
Larry?
Larry, said, "No, no, you can't do that, you have, it can't be adjacent," and he was very adamant about that in the meeting.
They can't be adjacent, yeah, that's a thing.
Yeah.
But there's still many already in town that
Okay, you're right, 103 does take that out.
And some that are coming up after.
Does take it out, okay. Yeah, when, because when we were looking at this Kathy Nelson's property I looked through it
Yeah, I think because I would have been
Yeah, so that's back in 2000.
Okay.
I just didn't see that part out. So I thought that was strange.
It was Larry, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's, especially when we're requiring so many different
That'd be weird.
Correct, so many things on that, that
Not, not on this
It's gotta be certain side, certain
Trailer house
Periphery and everything.
Because it was there before, we don't have to have it happen.
Well, you guys gave her a variance.
Yeah, you were
It's for her, not for somebody buying it.
That's true.
Well, but she had it done to sell it that way. Like, we pulled it out, and he took it down with the county.
Yeah, yeah, very is gonna go with the property, you know, something like that. I mean, 'cause if, even if you had something built a house
They're talking about selling it, that's the purpose of doing it.
A conditional use permit doesn't go with the property typically, but a very because you're granting a reason for the size, you grab the variance, they don't have to tear the house down.
We were saying, yeah, you can't just say, "Well, you moved some house, there was your house."
But the other portion of the property that was with it
That's what
It was a whole
Oh, that's, the order gets in there. Yeah. I might have to be thinking about that.
So how am I am I doing this?
So if you want to go a little something that route, I'll prepare a formal ordinance that does that.
Don't we have to get rid of how old it can be or something?
Yeah, one of the ages.
Yeah, 'cause that's when they started constructing them, you know, as far as, that's why it says since 1976, is 'cause that's when all the HUD regulations and stuff came into place. So you're, you'll be covered with that.
Okay.
But if you want something simple like that, then that's something all
So the lower part here
It was easier to understand than ours.
Yeah, and that's kinda why I like Aberdeen, 'cause it's very straightforward and simple.
They meant to, we even meant to wheel.
Yeah.
So what do we have to do?
Well, so we'll put it on next month. Technically, we should have a public hearing for it, cause it's a planning and zoning question.
Oh.
So I'll put a notice together so we can do that all at once. I mean, you're not really changing the ordinance to any great extent, so I can't imagine it's, the pitch of the roof is about the only thing that's different. Yours has a two twelve, it's a three twelve. But I'm sure that probably follows the HUD ordinance anyway.
If you don't know, it's just, steeper roof.
Yeah.
So to table it to a public hearing.
It's like with the notice, but we can have a public hearing. I'll draft a formal ordinance that does that when we get on next month in one shot.
Yeah.
It's gonna be full of hearings next month. Is there a budget hearing? Did it all?
Unless you get a full crowd, it won't take long. Get a bunch of pitchforks and axes, that maybe will.
We like that you twelve.
How about four twelve though?
I think that's a minimum.
Okay, so somebody needs to make a motion to table that to a public hearing next month. Need to make a motion to table it for next month to a public hearing.
Do we make a motion to table it for next month for a public hearing?
I'm starting it.
On my favor.
Is everybody more comfortable with kind of the Aberdeen ordinance?
Highland, did I cut off somewhere?
I'll, I'll adopt it that direction and then we can tweak it from there.
Okay. Maintenance report from Brian.
Things are going good?
Shh, don't you exist.
Uh, lagoons are looking really good. We've dropped another inch. Hot windy weather is helping. Weeds are under control. They've got spray in between the wind and hot weather. Uh, they're dying back, so looking good. We're working on stuff to pass roads. Hopefully we'll be working on that next week. If you see me out, don't run me over. I don't have a mortgage yet.
Well, just get some, get some spray paint, get you.
Just gotta tell your master.
Get him a hard hat with a little yellow flashing light on it.
We can afford that.
Yeah, that, we're, sewer's running pretty good. Like I say, I, we're, we're running about, still about thirty thousand gallons a, a day in a twenty-four hour period. And the fact that we're dropping an inch a week is, that's pretty good. It's doing what it's supposed to be doing. Water, we're using a lot of water. Our bashed in help. It was a lot of fun. Yeah, we're, we're using about four hundred and fifty or five hundred thousand gallons.
Wow, how much?
A day, which is, is pretty good for us. It's nothing compared to other cities, but. Yeah, we're climbing up there. I, I think our flow meter in the booster house is about ready to flip one more number, so we'll have to add a two instead of a one. But we're working on that. Uh, Mount West is working on some quotes for some new flow meters. Four B. B I, then there's.
We'd like to buy one, at least on this one, that's the goal. There is room there.
They're working on one for well three, just cause it doesn't work. At least the booster house, it does work. We just have to add numbers to the each side. It's kind of like a little Chevy. It's flipped ones twice.
When you say original miles or the.
Clean little owner. Yeah, I've got some, I've called around, I've got some prices on asphalt, so. I think we'll be starting that next week. Trying to get some of these hatched up in the hot weather. I did try, uh, I've heard Shelley uses nothing but bag mix, pretty much unless they're doing big patches, then they use hot asphalt. And so I did try, Hope Depot sells the bag mix, uh, cold patch. And I, this big hole that's just through the intersection here was, I filled that in with that bag mix and there's two over in front of the booster house that I filled in. And I, for the smaller patches, that actually works really well.
That'll be easier to store.
Yes, it's easier to store, so it's all in bags, so you don't have to worry about if it's outside and the weather's too much. So.
You know, Home Depot gives you a discount, you buy a whole pallet at the time.
Well, I will probably look at other oil places to get it by the pallet. But I, I think in the future, I plan on keeping some of that for the smaller patches on hand. It's a little more expensive to do it that way. But it's very convenient.
Well, and cost wise, being able to store it better.
Yeah, so I don't have to go out with the heat.
Yeah.
And warm it back up and try to get it to move and chip it back up off the ground.
Well, being able to fix it when it's a small hole before it's a big hole.
Yes, yes. So yeah, I, I think some of that I, or maintenance budget, I may look at buying the pallet and that before this.
How much was a sack of that?
It's about twenty-five dollars a sack. It's got an eighty pound, eighty pound bag. So.
What do you use to put up your compact with?
Tractor.
Moccasins.
And, and it does. They actually recommend one of those hand thumpers.
I thought you were gonna say moccasins.
We can make a final sticker that says moccasin, right?
A plate compactor would work. Uh, I used the tractor in a.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if you had one of the walk behind whackers though. So that's what we were constructing, that's what we used.
Yeah, a plate compactor and like.
You got, you got the, you got the plate ones which do a certain amount of impacting, but the what, stand up whacker one, that puts about three times as much impact on it, really packs down into it.
Yeah, the tractor with a board or something on there, it, you can hardly tell. It's blended right in with the asphalt out here. You, you have to look for it. So I'm impressed with it, so we'll probably get some of that in the future. Uh, we're still looking at trucks. I just have to get, schedule a time with the mayor to go look at.
Couple of miles recliner.
You can get a couple. There's a couple I've got my eye on. There's still one in Mokadella that has a snowplow. And it's just, it's owned by a individual. It's not a company selling it, so. You have some concerns about buying it from an individual versus a dealership?
Biggest problem with buying a truck with a plow already, is it's been used.
Yeah.
Like a plow truck and it's. And so it may be, may sound like a good deal, but you probably want to buy a truck that hasn't had a plow on it.
But it's still worth it, so. And the ones over in Jackson are still available.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of trying to spend the money wisely. I think that's it.
Okay.
Drew has a.
The caries getting ready to turn some vehicles back in there, switching lease companies.
Are they gonna be auctioning them?
Uh, no. So the lease company that we signed up with, bought all of our vehicles and then they are rotating out. I can, I can hold.
Will they sell them or is it leased?
They're gonna sell.
They're gonna sell.
Try to lease them to another, to do this place.
How technical, sorry.
We did talk about that, leasing options, but I think we didn't all lease, but they're selling them. Be interested in them.
Yeah, we're more interested in just buying that, yeah.
I don't, I know they're trading some Toyota tender half tons, but I don't know what else.
Looking for more of a.
Three quarter ton.
A one ton.
One ton?
Yeah.
I don't know that way.
If you notice, I'm like, I appreciate it.
So I'll leave them, meet if, if our government, maybe they have connections to something.
Okay.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
That would be awesome. Okay, I'll get it to Brian.
Thank you.
Brian, can anybody ever come out and put tickets on the cars that were inside the road that you were talking about one time?
Yeah, I forgot. Yes, uh, I have had two vehicles still. I, I don't want to see.
Towed? Yes, but it's, it's gone. I know it's.
Is it gone? Okay, so the white Ford Explorer that's, was down on the corner, it's gone. And then the motorhome that was just blocked out here, it's gone. And there's a couple others that are getting ready to get tagged too.
It's a good practice room.
Yeah, so, uh, just in case he's, the motorhome, he'll probably end up losing money on it, but I mean, but he's taking the liability for all of that, so.
He's hoping people will come in and pay.
Yeah, yeah, and in the end, what he's hoping for is that people come back to him and say, I want my vehicle back and pays for the tow and the storage and the, they get the, they don't want to load the side of the road.
Do you have any complaints since he ended up towed?
So far, I don't think anybody's even noticed that the vehicles are being towed.
Why did they get towed?
Yeah.
I saw Michael flying yesterday, the white.
Well, there's one in my yard I'd like to have towed. Can I push it out and throw it a little more? And then you guys can take it. Sounds like a good deal to me.
If he hasn't tied it, it'll come.
Oh, I got it. I will put it under the, the front front format if you want it. Just don't tell Jason, you got it for me.
Sign it.
Yeah, yep.
All right.
Let me ask one more quick question. Um, I was talking, we talked about the, first, remember we were gonna sign that contract with first, send our sewer over there? Do we still have that option to sign a contract with them?
So we do have a contract. I had him send it to me. It didn't really discuss prices. The last time we flew up to first, he did say when he dropped that off, Robert was like, this is what it would be on a contract price. And I don't remember what it was a gallon, but it was not a terrible bill.
It's about the same as if we had joined their sewer way back when they put it in.
Yeah.
And the contract that is there is so old and now outdated.
Yeah.
Because it required you to help pay for and all, so obviously all that's just one running bridge.
But he did send it to me just so I had it on file with him.
So one of these days, it probably ought to be something new.
He had been, he was nice to us this last time.
Yeah, he was very generous and we've, we've sent quite a bit more than we did last year. It was cheaper than last year. So, so they have been very generous in where he's been.
So it'd be worth looking into signing a contract?
Probably should because, uh, our, our ponds are, you know, adequate for the way it is.
The ponds actually were designed to overflow them into the field. That is not a thing that's allowed anymore.
You're always gonna want that backup plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then every, every time there's a house added, it's just gonna add more to the pond, so.
Okay.
It's, it's only gonna get to be more and more.
And when you start getting younger families come in, it's gonna go even more.
If Gil puts four houses on this property, it's gonna be.
No, 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 that, that's gonna be, that's gonna be growing land there. We're gonna have to get cattle out there, two or three.
So the lady that was here last month that wanted the five plex, they gave up on that?
No, she just asked for more time.
Okay, how about for the new budget, the new budget for fiscal year twenty five?
Yeah, so I'm sorry, this is small print, so I hope you have glasses on. I need mine too. All right, so this is kind of what I've been working on for this next year's budget and general fund specifically. If you notice, I have colored highlights there. That's just kind of for my information. The green represents new categories that I'll be adding. And then there's some of these, the yellow ones, I've noticed really never get used and I'm wondering if I can take them out. I asked the auditor, am I allowed to remove categories? There's a lot of blanks in some of the water and sewer, just to clean it up. Um, okay, so I put in Blue Cross Idaho Grant for twenty thousand and if you look down in the expenses, I wanna show you. I put that as a separate category so we can keep track of where that money goes exactly. And to talk about the why, so when we applied for that, they, they want you to use it to help your community be healthy, right? And Laura and her husband wrote the answers and they did clarify, like, it would go to a truck to help us maintain our roads. And we definitely can still use it that way, but I wanted to share a little bit of information and give you something to think about. So when I was sitting, when we were sitting there at the meeting in Boise, um, we were in this little table and the other little cities there, um, are all about our same size. And they were talking about all the stuff that they have. And I was like, how do you afford that? How do you do that? Like, they had a park, they had, uh, old buildings, I, what do you call it, like, anyways.
The insurance park.
Yeah, so I asked specifically on the park. So I have had people ask me, why does Basalt not have a park? And I had asked that, I believe it was Guy that gave me an answer, and I believe that after talking to Brian too. Um, because Guy had a dream to put in something and he was told, well, you can't because we can't afford the insurance. Well, I learned at this little conference that there is a exception to city-run parks.
Cause there's immunity.
And so I asked the insurance agent, if we put in some kind of little like swing set or something like that. What are the liability costs that would go into our insurance? And he said, you just have to maintain it and maybe like insure what you do put up, but nothing major. Just make sure that your equipment's covered. So with that in mind, and I was talking to Brian, he said, you know, the city used to have a big swing set behind the old maintenance shop, which is now a booster house, and we still have that. And I said, oh. What is it, like, would put it up? He said, some of it would have to be repaired. It is old and maybe it would be best to just build something new. But I think we really should think about doing something like that.
Got a few things in mind.
It doesn't have to be big. It doesn't have to be obnoxious.
That would be.
Where would you think?
Yeah, where is my question?
Okay, so there's the well house over there. There's a green lot. We could get it grassy, water it, maintain it, put a swing set up. That wouldn't cost a ton of money.
There's a small piece of property next to the water pump house over here that we, that people were dumping grass.
Supposed to be rogue.
And so we can clean that up.
Eight, ten doors.
You could clean it out, put a swing set there.
Put some sprinklers in, plant some grass, make it nice spots instead of blocked in. He says, yeah.
It's never gonna be a robe.
It's gonna be a robe. I'm telling you, before I retire, it's gonna be a robe.
Well, it's gonna be a greasy, a grassy lot until then.
So, I want you guys to think about that. You don't have to answer that. You can put the twenty thousand wherever you want, but maybe part of it.
Use a park.
I think kids. Would your kids use a swing set? Yeah. Not everybody's old.
These things, yeah. Parts generally for kids to use it have to be big enough to have, be, use, be able to use for multiple things. You have a, a play area, then you have your, your grass area.
And you could do that over at the well house. I think, like, you could put up a little pavilion and.
You could like put a little at the end of the road and kind of off there. That'd be, I think that's a perfect.
And Basalt batch, if we continue to do that, would that provide us a better place to do it than in the road?
I think that well house would be a great place to put it. You got a little tree growing there already?
So, things to think about.
How hard would it be to use that patch of grass behind the church?
That's the.
That's the churches.
But I mean, like to acquire. Churches aren't so much like that. The little fact that they're, they're gonna also have to fed over there, so. There's only some. They're just, they've got a place for it already.
I don't know. I know when I moved to town, I would love to have a park for my kids and it's like, really? There's not a park in this town?
We have, we have.
A more park. So they are encouraging us to really think outside the box with using this money.
So potentially we have twenty thousand dollars to put in something.
And it could go in the bowl.
Picnic benches, benches, air for the flower bed, a new flagpole, swing set.
You could put up, yeah, little benches out there.
It could still go to do.
You could even build like a kind of smaller swing set and put it out there.
Did Kathy Nelson sell on the west side of the canal also?
Drew Jensen could donate some property.
I think, I think they did.
She's a big one.
Let's bring back the old sixties wheel of death.
Merry-go-round, yes.
All right.
Uh, street maintenance, I did put in sixty thousand. That's why the fund balance forward is a little bit higher too. So whether we did something different with that Blue Cross money than Rose, um, we could still seal coat a robe this next year that needs to be done. Um, and then I do have the truck loan payments again out of each fund for the year. So. If you have any other questions, you can let me know. Oh, and insurance, I was told by the auditor can be, and I did divide it out between each fund. He kind of recommended that too. It used to be, like, I didn't add that category. Um, I don't know when it was stopped.
Is the truck payment divided out?
Yeah, it's divided amongst the three.
So truck payment be twelve thousand dollars, eighteen thousand?
Each year, so it's paid for.
Oh, year, okay, sorry. Full term, I, I hold my stuff.
Yeah, and we could still put the twenty thousand towards it too. I really did think we should think about.
Got some ideas in place.
Some fun things. Truck's fun.
Anything else?
Um, I don't think so unless you guys had any thoughts or what should be added or if I'm missing something.
Just 'cause somebody in the community asked me this, are we up to, so are fees now covering our expenses for water, sewer and garbage and we're not?
I think so, yeah. Um, in January, I'll get a chart together. It'll show like.
Cause that's when they'll increase.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
But just balancing the checkbook right now and water, like when I first started, I would see we're like in the whole a thousand, two thousand, maybe up one month, a thousand. And I would say each month we're at least like three thousand positive.
Okay, good.
If not more.
Okay.
Which still isn't a lot, but it's better. And our water funds are growing. If you look at that little extra chart I gave you too, I wasn't really gonna talk about it, but I put it in there for each quarter. You can tell where we ended last year to now, and we're doing maintenance. Some expensive maintenance.
Did we see, we haven't seen the, well, West Billy and that was.
Yeah, we did.
So it is.
It was nine hundred for water this month.
Any other thoughts out here, questions, comments, complaints?
Stops.
I had another, I talked to another comment down the road this way and they have the same issues with car speeding. Um, I was looking to like the actual, and it's weird cause I thought it was gonna be something like you had those getting made especially. You can order them on Amazon, ten for two hundred bucks.
For just the stop signs?
Just the stop signs.
Yeah, there is a difference on the ones on Amazon, but I saw them too.
The size and stuff.
But I think it's, wow, and are they on the same street as you?
Yeah.
Same corner?
It's even.
Not the same corner, they're down.
Same street.
Cause the stop signs don't run up a lot, nobody shows up to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I told him to comment, they, yeah.
Keep in mind, we did have a stop sign there.
Yeah, and people ran it all the time.
Yeah, they run these ones.
It's not a stop, you're going through there.
Mike Sabagio, the other one that wants a stop sign there?
He runs this one.
He runs this one often than not. So I don't know.
I was gonna call him out if he came.
Oh, I've seen it.
Next time he comes to my house.
I'd run the stop sign by my, by my house.
I do know that Luann was asking why we put stop signs the way we did. Originally, this was a Kelly Road. This is a main road through. So there's one stop sign right there.
And if you put them on every corner.
This is center street, so there's one stop sign here. So all the other roads stopped to this road. And that's kind of how it was set up.
If you put them on every corner, I think it would really annoy people and they wouldn't obey them.
Then they start running them home.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's like, you know, um, like when you told them eat that cookie, they probably eat that cookie. But, you know, you're still gonna get in trouble whether, you know.
Yeah, but they only get in trouble if there's an officer that happens to catch them.
I figured that's why they took the stop sign down is the cops are sick and they fault them, what's his name? So they're like, just taking it out from Dawn, yeah.
I think if we're doing it.
I was just gonna say, uh, there's a fellow that works, he has a shop that he works in and he buys stuff on publicsurplus.com and he found a like twenty-two Duramax that has service bent on it and got it for like twenty-four. Might be a weird color.
We don't care.
I was just gonna say.
Yeah, I have been watching those. Idaho doesn't have a whole lot right now. Utah's got a lot.
He had built Tennessee.
We saw a good one in Florida, but then you like wonder, yeah, and what do you get when you get there? Okay, if you have any things about, questions about budget, you have enough to, well, no, you don't. You have a couple weeks, cause I have to publish it. So let me know.
The other comment I was gonna make is on that cold mix, Brian, maybe some of the other smaller cities, they buy a ballot for maybe like Kettering. They'd buy that way on weather and sand.
First. Put in an order together and.
You might be able to save some money.
That's good, yeah, I'll talk to Justin in Texas.
And then I did wanna ask about the Basalt Bash. If you ever been in good, bad. I think those that came.
Everybody loved it.
Had fun. I got asked a lot if we'll do it every year, please. So I added up all the receipts. We did spend like eighteen hundred altogether. And I did ask people, I can't guarantee that Rocky Mountain Power will give us money every year for it. How do you feel if the city paid for it? And they all said yes. But I have heard negative from people that didn't come.
Well, how can they be negative if they didn't come?
The biggest thing is people think I made some shady deal with Rocky Mountain Power and.
There's a lot of that.
Tell me what I did.
Yeah, we're just gonna have to ignore that, cause they just want something to complain about.
Either way, I got money.
That's just silly.
But and our streetlights, thirty-four dollars a month now for streetlights and they all worked from a hundred and ninety-five.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
That's huge.
It's a hundred fifty dollars.
Something to consider for next year's bash, um, you know.
You didn't come.
Grandkids dumped on me and it's like, they got, so I.
He's one of them, huh?
No, no, I wanted to come, but all of a sudden I had all the grandkids.
Why do you bring the grandkids?
I'm not, I am not stupid. I keep them locked up in that house.
That's why they run away.
So that, so, yeah, exactly. But what I'm saying is, you know, go back to Rocky Mountain about a couple months ahead of time. Go to, um, Intermountain Gas.
Yeah, no, Brian and I talked about that, going to our bank, I know connections does stuff.
And not even our, our specific, you can go, the, um, the credit unions. You know, they put up a refreshment booth, they'll be happy to donate money as well too.
So, and I did print up pictures. I'm gonna hang them. I'm gonna make a bulletin board. We're gonna have new community pictures, not just old ones. But I know the kids had fun in the fire hydrant.
People talked to the community.
And adults that ran in it.
Okay, one more comment.
So the Cedar Creek Wind Farm up there, they always like to donate to the communities.
That's awesome.
So you might check with them.
Okay.
Yes.
So I just have a question too in regards to this hearing that's coming up in August about the dairy out here. Do we know how that's gonna impact us as a city, a field, bad myself, but whatever, but as our financially or whatever, road maintenance, all that kind of stuff?
So that, that meeting is on the same night that we're having city council. So Brian, we're gonna have you.
We talked maybe.
As to represent the city.
You're pretty well versed on water and all that stuff, so.
And because we maintain the Goshen Road this base.
Well, we're supposed to.
How many more?
They ask us if they're supposed to.
I mean, is that.
The counties still do it, but.
Is that gonna be more wear and tear with more, you know?
Permission to pay on a.
Milk trucks coming up and down. I mean, if they're gonna increase it by, I can't, I can't remember how many, a few, quite a few thousands of thousands.
In front of you guys or in front of your P and Z board? It's with. Anyway, but we probably have a lot, cause I don't wanna taint the hearing for Drew.
I have to recuse myself.
Oh, okay, if you gotta recuse yourself anyway, then I don't care.
Yeah, cause you're the.
He's in the line of fire.
He's impacted by the, by what they're doing.
Okay, well, I just, yeah, so if you gotta recuse yourself, it doesn't matter.
So I was, he compensated financially and I said, no. And he says, how about if you're promptly buy this one out of the ice?
Yes. Yeah, if you're within that distance, so, anyway. I just wanted to make sure we weren't putting you in a bad spot.
So I just, you know, more wear and tear, you know, they're increasing it by that huge amount that they're gonna be bringing in. You know, what can we do as a city or what can you guys do as a city to help, you know, with maintenance or whatever else if they approve it, which.
Yes, they will go around on our part. I mean.
The only thing that we can do is find a Goshen ordinance that will mitigate the effect.
Yeah.
If it's just.
Did you hear that, Robin? What you're saying?
To look into the county ordinance, state ordinances and find something that may.
Effect.
Affect the city so that, because if it's just, you complain that you don't like the smell or whatever.
Right, no, I've seen some of those going around too. Yeah.
It's been bad the last couple nights. I'm like, is that in my head because?
No, that's, that's, Esplin's pulling that mash out of the cell.
Oh, it stinks so bad. That's different.
That's, that's potato dirt.
Okay, okay.
That's not cows. You don't smell that.
Well, that's what I thought. I'm like, I've never smelled that before.
Typically, we don't smell them. We smell basic.
So I don't know if there will be more milk cows be there, but so when the cow head count gets from baby cats to cows and so they're stating. There'll be more head.
And more smell and more traffic and more everything.
Like our concern, I think, is more is.
Water.
Water. Those big ponds that they just let sit and soak in our aquifer, that's, I mean, our nitrate, when, when Esplin's doubled there, our nitrate levels jump.
Yes, I, I have more effect on me, I think, places just because the water flows.
But I, I just think, I mean, it's going into the water, whether we're pumping upstream from them or not, I mean. It's going in the water.
How much does the EPA get along, get on that turn? Do they, or will they, or they should, I guess.
If you encourage them to come, they will, cause in all the planning zoning meetings, they have about the NQ respond. And so if they get some inquiries, maybe they will respond in a way that would be favorable to the cities. You have to lean on them to want to make them stand up and protect your rights.
Guess we're done?
Somebody asked on the.
I made a motion, we adjourn. Adjourn, oh my goodness.
I'll second.
On the pair. Okay, thanks.